Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the annual town meeting to order. My name is Walter Eichel, and welcome to the Fall 2022 Norton Town Meeting. To my right is town clerk Lucia Longhurst, and to my left are the Chair and Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, Bonnie Thompson and Paula Daniels. First, I'd like to invite you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is that all right? Please be seated.
So, when they pass, it's a little quicker, just what it says?
Yeah. One second, great. All right. Thank you very much for you all taking the time and making the effort to attend our town meeting. I would also like to thank my deputy moderator, Mr. Gouvera, for officiating at the Spring Town Meeting while I was out of town. I would also like to announce that we have an opening on the Finance Committee, so if you're interested in contributing and participating in town government, here's an opportunity for you. If you are interested, come and see me or send me an email at my town email address. Before we begin the meeting, I would like to go over some of the rules governing the meeting tonight. If you are a registered voter, you may sit anywhere in the front and upper my left of the auditorium. Non-voters will be seated in this section up here labeled "Non-Voters." If you are a voter, do not sit in that section as your vote will not be counted. If you wish to address the meeting, you may do so only after being recognized by the moderator. When you wish to speak, please move to one of the microphones, and we have two microphones in the center and one up here in the front. Otherwise, please stay at your seats during the meeting. When you speak, please start by stating your name and address so the clerk can record that information for the minutes of the meeting. Please try and keep your remarks brief, to the point, and make sure they are relevant to the article under discussion only. All speakers will be treated with respect and courtesy by the moderator and the other attendees of the meeting. No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any individual. All remarks will be directed to the moderator, and while I will allow questions to be asked of individuals, I will not allow cross-examination of speakers. In recognizing people to speak, I will try to call upon those who have not spoken on the topic already before, before those who have already spoken. If a standing vote is required, you will be instructed to stand at your seats until the ballot is counted. If a ballot vote is required, instructions will be presented at that time. If you wish to make an amendment to a motion, you must do so in writing and present it to the moderator and the clerk. Please prepare your written amendment and bring it up here. If you want to move an article that has not been recommended by the Finance Committee, you must also present that motion in writing to the clerk. No motion to reconsider any article will be accepted by the moderator until at least three articles following that article have been acted upon by this meeting. This will not apply if the article is one of the last three on the warrant. Be aware that any article you act on tonight can be reconsidered. So, the Bill Gouvea Rule of Reconsideration means if you came here for, let's say, Article Five, and that article passes and you decide to leave the meeting, but three articles later someone moves to reconsider the article, discussion and possible voting restarts and the results may change. So be aware of the results of the voting, be aware that the results of the voting are not permanent until the end of the meeting. There will be a process for non-voters to speak on certain articles, and it is up to the meeting to decide, but I remind you that outside speakers often have important, relevant facts you will need when considering articles. So consider that when deciding whether to hear outside speakers. Speakers today, we have our town council, sorry, Joe Faya, Faya, will be representing the town council tonight. Thank you very much for coming. Let's see. Miss Chairperson of the Finance Committee, is there a motion to allow outside speakers to speak?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor of allowing outside speakers to speak, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Thank you. The motion passes by unanimous vote as determined by the moderator. One procedural note, thank you for the second, but motions made by the Finance Committee are, do not require a second, but they are fine if you'd like to make one. Madam Clerk, has there been a return on the warrant?
Mr. Moderator, yes. Norton, Massachusetts. I have served this warrant by posting attested copies at Chatley Post Office, Norton Post Office, Norton Municipal Center, Norton Public Library, and three other public places within the limits of said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Attest. Michael Jane May, Constable of Norton, October 6, 2022.
Thank you. We will now proceed to the warrant. As is our custom, the Chairperson of the Finance Committee makes the motions for the warrant articles.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairman.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $5,993.83 from free cash to pay the following unpaid bills incurred in a prior fiscal year, all as specified in the Finance Committee recommendations for Article One of the October 17, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article One? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. I would like to let you know that this requires a four-fifths majority for passage, and it would be very helpful if we could make that vote unanimous. All those in favor of Article One, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article One passes by unanimous vote as determined by the moderator. Article Two.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chairperson.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $70,168 from free cash to pay all outstanding separation expenses associated with the retirement of various employees from the town of Norton, and to authorize the town accountant, in consultation with the town manager, to allocate amounts to the appropriate departments.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Two? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Two, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Two passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article Six of the June 7, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant by increasing appropriations for certain light items and, as funding therefore, to raise and appropriate the amount of $298,318 and to transfer the amount of $907,433 from free cash, all as specified in the Finance Committee recommendations for Article Three of the October 17, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Three? Yes, sir.
Freeman Street. We're three months into the current fiscal year, and we're already short a million-two. We're going to be, if this continues, we're going to be short about five million, five million, with the other three-quarters of the year. I'd like an explanation on how we get so far behind so soon. I guess that's my question.
Thank you. Mr. Unitz, would you like to respond?
It's been the practice of the last several years. There's a lot of items that we hold off on appropriating funds for until we know what our free cash certification is, and that's what we've done here.
Any further discussion on Article Three? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Three, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Three passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator. Article Four. Article Four fails for lack of emotion. Article Five. Article Five fails for lack of emotion. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $800,000 from free cash to the Capital Improvements Fund.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Six? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Six, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Six passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $158,500 from the Capital Improvements Account and $32,500 from the Ambulance Reserve Fund for a total of $191,000 to purchase or lease with an option to purchase for periods of time up to or in excess of three years, new and/or replacement capital items for various town departments, including equipping any vehicles and all other incidental and related expenses, all as specified in the Finance Committee recommendations for Article Seven of the October 17, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. And the amounts moved match the printed material that was distributed.
They do.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Seven?
James Slattery, 3630 Street. My question is, on any of these vehicles, are we looking into hybrid and electric vehicles?
Thank you. Mr. Unitz.
We have, and if we can come by them, we will get them. The police department, deputies, do you have two now? Two hybrids now.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Seven? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Seven, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Seven passes by a two-thirds majority as determined by the moderator. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article Twelve of the May 9, 2016 Annual Town Meeting to authorize the amount of $34,800 appropriated to expand the Council on Aging parking lot on West Main Street to now be used to expand the parking lot area at the new facility to be located at 116-120 Mansfield Avenue. Said funds to be in addition to the funds appropriated under Article One of the May 8, 2021 Special Town Meeting or any other meeting.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Eight? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Eight, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Eight passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken under Article One of the May 8, 2021 Special Town Meeting by deleting the following, quote, "That the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by the amount of any gifts or grants received for such purposes prior to the issuance of the bonds or notes authorized hereunder and further."
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Nine? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Beth Rossi. I'm the Director of Human Services in the Council on Aging, located in our senior center here in town. I've been working closely with the building committee, the architect, and our project manager for over the past year, and let me tell you, they're doing an awesome job with the plans for our new facility. Unfortunately, we didn't expect the fallout from the virus and other economics to really impact the project. Right now, our project is over budget, and we want to have the ability to be able to do some fundraising to support the project. Right now, the way it stands, if we don't raise money, we will have a beautiful building with nothing inside it. So we would like to be able to do things like other senior centers do, like, you know, buy a brick or have the, you know, a room named after someone, and we just want the opportunity to be able to make the center what everybody needs it and wants it to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Eight? I'm sorry, Article Nine. Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Nine, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Nine passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of $28,560 from free cash for settlement of the Schbach Landfill Superfund site, natural resource damages claims, and further vote to authorize the select board and/or town manager to execute any and all documents, including but not limited to consent decree, and to take any further action necessary to effectuate this vote.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article Ten? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Ten, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article Ten passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator. Article Eleven.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chair.
I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 110, Article Three, Section 110 through 11 of the town's bylaws as en filed with the town clerk by making adjustments to the salary plan as specified in Article 11 of the October 17, 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Thank you. And the numbers being moved are exactly what's posted in the handout?
They are.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 11? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 11, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article 11 passes by majority vote as determined by the moderator.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Am I supposed to move it, or how do you do this?
You are.
But citizens petition, Mike Sweeney, 14 Laurel Lane, like to move, bring it up for discussion. We do have a PowerPoint here, if we can get that loaded, is that ready to go?
Mr. Sweeney, can I just guide you here? Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to move our Article 12, as heard, as written in the warrant.
Please proceed. Thank you, yes.
Go ahead, Mike.
And Mr. Moderator, through you. Up here is a, Article 12, obviously is written, and I'll go through the, I'll quickly go through several slides. The article's goal is to create a more inclusive and transparent process for selecting and renewing members of the Norton Finance Committee. They oversee its $69 million town budget annually. The proposing article is to create an appointment, a finance appointing committee that is made up, that would be made up from nominations from the select board, the school committee, the assessors, the planning board, and the, the committee would be chaired by the moderator. Next slide. Currently on the, on your left, as you're looking at this, is our current process. The moderator appoints members to the Finance Committee, and on the right is what's being proposed. They would all appoint individuals that would be part of this committee for a one-year term, and then they would appoint to the Finance Committee. Next slide. The Finance Committee's responsibilities right now is to review articles on budget, zoning, and operations. The annual budget, if we look at that back in 1990, was 17 million; in 2000, it was 30 million; in 2010, it's 48 million; and in 2020, 69 million. This budget has gone a lot larger, and the Finance Committee is responsible for reviewing the town manager's recommendations, and what this article is proposing to do is create a more inclusive process, possibly, hopefully, bringing diverse individuals and different, people with different ideas to the Finance Committee. Next slide. The moderator versus, the moderator appointing versus a committee appointment. Currently, the process is a closed process. It isn't, it isn't dictated by open meeting law. That's when I talk about transparency, that's what I talk about. Tough recruitment for one person to try to bring individuals in for the Finance Committee. People may not volunteer, do a singular person's perception, so if you believe that that person had something against you, they may not do it, but they may do it under a committee. So, as the proposed appointing process is an open meeting law, which is required by law, it's a transparent process of applicants, so we'll actually see who's applying for the Finance Committee, possible increase of recruiting and interest in the Finance Committee, as well as a more diverse of opinions and that on proposed annual town budget. Next slide. Okay. So, this is, right now, we did a, we did an evaluation, last year, this was presented to the Finance Committee, and we were told, nobody does this process. So we went back and we did an evaluation of 129 municipalities in Plymouth County, Norfolk, Bristol, and Middlesex. Of those 129, 21 cities, they have, cities don't have Finance Committee, 10 towns elect their Finance Committee, 51 towns have their Finance Committee appointed by the town moderator, which is our current process, 46 towns have their Finance Committee in some form of committee, which is 43% of the towns that were evaluated. Okay? As budgets are getting bigger, it's about making sure more people are part of this process, and we're getting more eyes on this process. Well, actually, one is appointed by town manager. There's no way we're going to let Mike Unitz do that alone, so we'll just move on. I'm only teasing, Mike. Next slide. So some of the frequently asked questions, do other towns have an appointment committee? 43% of towns evaluated, and this is growing, because when the charter was written, when our charter was written, it was a very, very small town budget. Do they have appointing committees with the same makeup that's being proposed? Every town has some kind of form of difference, but it is a committee. Is the new appointing committee required to follow open meeting law? Yes. For the first time in the town's history, the deliberation and voting of the selection of the Finance Committee members will be public. Will, will an appointing committee make more diverse Finance Committees? Yes, more open process, it will bring a diverse of ideas and thoughts and individuals' backgrounds to the Finance Committee. Next slide. Isn't this extra work for, over the existing process? Yeah, I don't see it that way. I see this committee, you know, I, it was, I think Belmont has their meeting, their appointing committee tonight, and the meeting is scheduled for an hour. So I don't see it really adding that much more time to what's there. What if the board does not appoint an individual by the deadline? The members of, the appointed members to the Finance Appointing Committee will fill that empty, will fill that vacancy. Is the appointment process broken? I say yes and no. There is no problems with this. If we, if this doesn't pass, where the, the sun will rise tomorrow, where the, the town will operate. This is not a, you know, our two town moderates, our past two town moderates have done an excellent job, but I see it, where I see this is, is we only have one person's background choosing these individuals, and I'm trying to diversify that and bring different backgrounds to this. Is it irresponsible to have an appointing committee made up of committees whose budgets are reviewed? You elect members of the school committee, you elect members for the school's budget, you elect members to the select board for the operation budget now. All right? The majority of these members are, do not have a budget. Assessors does not have a budget, planning board does not have a budget, the moderator does not have a budget. All right? So, you know, they, they're going to have feedback on who they want on the committee, but that's this, and I think that might be the last slide. Thank you, and to the moderator, any question, I would be open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tool. Is there any further discussion on Article 12? Yes, sir.
Through the moderator to selectman, to select board member, got to be politically You seem to emphasize the 47%, yet that's not 50% or more. How many towns have switched the process? Because my understanding, and I don't know the governmental organizations of every 352 cities and towns in Massachusetts, but how many towns have switched the process? I always thought they were appointed by the moderator. How many towns have switched? In your survey, do you know how many towns have switched? That's it.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Tool.
It's 43% of the 129 that we evaluated. I don't know the history of there, and if I try to pitch something, what I do know of that, there were some to have about 10 of 15, this seems to be a new process, where the old process was just the moderator. This seems to be a shift in a direction to an improved process, and that's all I'm trying to achieve with this article. It's, you know, the system isn't broken, but it can always, every system can be improved, and I think that's what this is doing, is improving the system.
Somebody step up.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Tim Griffin, 169 John Scott Boulevard, and just for transparency, I'm currently the Chair of the Planning Board, which this article would potentially impact. I noticed that the article is not recommended by the Finance Committee, which this pertains to, so if they're able, I'd like to hear what their thoughts on the process were. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Slattery, through you.
Ms. Chair.
We did take a vote on September 26, 2022, at that meeting, and the vote was zero to recommend, nine against, and one abstention. We had a substantial discussion. The petitioners were not present. They elected, they wrote a letter and elected not to present to us, and so we engaged a discussion without their presence, but we felt that there was, the majority of us felt that there was not a reason to change the process other than to possibly make some tweaks to the current process, and so we had discussions about what that might look like, but we didn't feel like the recommended changes improved the process. We thought it introduced actual new problems, if you want to call what the petitioners are calling problems, are problems. We thought it created conflicts of interest, as was mentioned by the school committee in particular, having a member on the appointing committee, because we felt that the moderator being the only person that does not have a budget would be, is the most, the person that makes sense to appoint the committee, and does not have any conflicts of interest. So we didn't feel there was a strong case for the information that was presented to us. So that's our discussion and how we voted.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Sweeney.
The reason the petitioner, myself, did not go to the Finance Committee, it was, I did have another issue going on that night, but in our letter to the Finance Committee, I felt that their discussion of the petition itself was almost a conflict of interest on their part, so I noted that, and I still went ahead and did discuss that night. So, conflict of interest was mentioned four or five times over here, and I'm going to say conflict of interest was already with them discussing this issue, because they're going to come up again as renewed Finance Committee members. So their discussion, in my opinion, which was highlighted in my letter to them, that was a conflict, but they still went ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chair.
The current bylaw reads, this is a quote, just a partial quote of the current bylaw, "The Finance Committee shall report its recommendations on every-"
"The Finance Committee shall report its recommendations on every article contained in a town meeting warrant in writing."
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Guevara.
Mr. Moderator, I feel very strongly about this article, and I just wanna-
Mister, I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Can I stop you?
Mister Moderator?
No, you may not interrupt.
It's a point of order here.
What's your point of order, sir?
He's the associate, the, what's his alternate or assistant town ma, uh, town moderator. If he's gonna speak to it, I'm, I'm thinking it's a conflict of interest for Mister Guevara to even speak to it. He is the, is the alternate town moderator. He could be involved in the future as your replacement, okay? As the appointing authority. So, I'm gonna, I'd like a ruling on that right away.
Understood, and as, as a voter of Norton, he is entitled to speak, and I'm going to let him speak. Mr. Guevara.
Thank you.
Can I have legal, can I have town council?
Could I finish a statement before I actually get interrupted again by Mr. Sweeney?
Let's not have a conflict right away, Bill.
A conflict, I'm just trying to talk, I'm not trying to do anything.
Could we have town council, try, uh, speak to it?
Thank you.
After consulting with council, I've determined that Mister Guevara is entitled to speak, and he may speak now.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Be very aware, folks, of people who won't go to the Finance Committee and then don't want people to talk. People who want to stop discussion are much more dangerous than people who wanna discuss it. I wanted to present a perspective here, because I'm one of the few people who have both been a member of the Finance Committee and have been served as moderator and appointed to Finance Committee. I was a member of the Finance Committee for fifteen years, so I know how the Finance Committee works. I appointed the Finance Committee for twelve years, uh, so I know how that process works. And based largely on that experience, I will tell you that this proposal is all about politics, and it is a, a solution in search of a problem, as the petitioners pretty much state in their thing. They have a clear answer as to whether there's a problem that exists now, and their very clear answer, as Mister, as, you know, Select Board Tool member said, is yes and no. I think that clears that issue, you know, right up. The reason that the voters long ago set this up for the moderator to appoint the Finance Committee is because of the role of the Finance Committee, and I want everyone to understand that Finance Committees in different towns operate differently. There's not just one set of rules for Finance Committees. Some Finance Committees in some towns only review budgets. Some Finance Committees in some towns only review warrant articles, or only review warrant articles with money attached to them. Uh, others are called, they're not actually called, uh, Finance Committees, like in, in Foxborough, they're called the Advisory Committee, and they have different duties. So, when Norton's Finance Committee was formed, it was formed to review every warrant article that goes before the voters and every budget. The only reason the Finance Committee exists is to give this meeting a recommendation, an honest, independent, objective recommendation. That's what they do. The reason the moderator was chosen to appoint is because the moderator is elected by the people, by you, and the, when the people elect the moderator, they know that one of the duties, one of, basically the two duties of the moderator, is to run town meeting and to appoint the Finance Committee. So, you have an elected individual doing that. The, the reason that the moderator is a perfect person is because the moderator has no budget. I'm not sure, I, I didn't know that the assessors and the planning board have no budget. I wonder if they know that they have no budget anymore. I don't know when somebody took it away from them, but as far as I know, they still are responsible for budgets. Uh, and the, the board, the moderator never has a budget. The moderator never sponsors a warrant article. So, when it comes to making recommendations to town meeting, the moderator is never in a position where he's appointing people who are going to make recommendations on his or her article, or his or her budget. Now, the answer to this problem that we don't have is that we're going to take the people who sit on the boards that make up the majority of the town budgets in town, the school committee, the selectmen who oversee the town manager, and then you have the police budget, the fire budget, all those other budgets, and the people who sponsor warrant articles, like the planning board sponsors zoning articles all the time, we're now seeking to put those people in charge of being the majority vote that would appoint the committee that's then going to review their articles and their budgets and make a recommendation to you. Now, forget who you like, forget who you vote for, forget what you, you know, forget politics, just think about it. Does that really make sense to you? Do you wanna take the appointing authority away from an elected official that you choose that has no budgets and no zoning articles, no articles, I'm sorry, warrant articles ever, and put that power in with the people who are constantly having budget? It's not their fault, that, that's their job, that are constantly in charge of budgets, that are constantly in charge of warrant articles. We think that's better? It is literally putting the foxes in charge of hiring the guards for the hen house. It doesn't make any sense. And some of the things that were on the explanation, when we say it makes it easier to recruit, you know, that a committee would make it easier to recruit if you include the assessors and the planning board and everybody else, I don't think that's true, and I think the evidence of that is, we can't even recruit people to be assessors and planning board members. I mean, most of the planning board members are now, were elected unopposed, or there was nobody running for seats at all, and we filled the seats afterwards because we had no candidates. That often happens with the assessors, too. So, we say we're going to increase recruitment by having the boards that we already can't get people to run for, to appoint the Finance Committee? That makes little to no sense. If this was really about transparency, and I can understand the transparency argument, you know, I've appointed many Finance Committee members in my time, and by the way, I was, I was appointed and reappointed by three different moderators, two of whom I was very friendly with, one of whom I couldn't stand, and he couldn't stand me, uh, but reappointed me anyway, because it was his job to reappoint people who are, have all different points of view. But, I just want you to understand that this is about people trying to get control. This lack of diversity on the Finance Committee, have you ever watched a Finance Committee meeting? Have you ever watched these people argue? Have you ever watched them debate? There is great diversity on the Finance Committee, and to suddenly politicize it by putting in this, in this committee, rather than keeping it to the way that you have enjoyed a strong Finance Committee for decades. They wanna take away your right to elect the moderator to appoint the Finance Committee, and they wanna politicize it and give that authority to people who have budgets at stake and warrant articles at stake. Please don't be fooled by politics. Please don't be fooled by the foolishness. The transparency article, if, if you wanna make the transparency clear, then create a bylaw, which I've already written to the Finance Committee and said, we can solve this by putting in a bylaw saying that all moderator appointments, you know, by the, by the, all moderator appointments of the FinCom have to be done in an open meeting, in an open session. Write that into a bylaw. It's, I will tell you that Finance Committee interviews are the most boring thing that you've ever watched in your life. Okay? You have to go out and get people, then you ask them the questions, you talk to them. Most times, I say seventy percent of the time, that I did it for twelve years, you only had like one or two candidates at a time. Other times, you might have four or five. There are people, there are people on the Select Board now who I didn't appoint to the Finance Committee right away. Maybe I appointed them on their second try or their third try. It's a good process. It's not broken. They can't point to a problem. This is because some people want control. Don't fall for it. Don't change it. There's no need.
Thank you, Mr. Guevara. Sorry, I believe you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. William Francis, sixty-six Plain Street. I just have a few questions here, actually, about the procedural, uh, way this is gonna be carried out. Now, the Finance Appointment Committee, so who's got to choose, or who's gonna appoint these members to be on the Appointment Committee? And, would, uh, and secondly, uh, if it's whatever the membership may be, how many peoples would be on this Appointment Committee? Then what will it take, what will the majority be to choose someone? If they recruit someone, or they summon volunteers to come up and say, yes, I wanna serve on the Finance Committee, then what will it be? Three, three to five majority will vote? I guess that, those are the two questions, 'cause it gets, it sounds a little bit like a Senate hearing, like, you know, you, you have to say the right things in order to get appointed. But if, if the gentleman would like to answer that, Mr. Moderator?
Thank you. Mr. Tool.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Francis, the committee is made up of five individuals. Those five individuals, except for the moderator, who is the Chair of the committee, okay? So, he's not being taken away, like it's been made out to believe. He's, he's on that committee. The other four are appointments of the school committee, the Select Board, the assessors, and the planning board. They're appointments.
Okay, I'm, so-
Okay, so they're not, they're not the members themselves. They're appointments to the Finance Appointing Committee.
Okay, so, just to clarify-
It's a simple majority, right? It's written, the way it's written would be simple majority.
So, how many members would be on the, the committee?
It would be a total of five.
Total of five?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you so much. I mean, I've had some interactions with the Finance Committee, and, I mean, as, as a personal witness, I guess you could say, I never noticed any irregularities within the Finance Committee. They didn't vote my way, but, you know, that's besides the point. But, all right, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Parker.
Hi, Laura Parker, Four Allen Drive. Mr. Moderator, through you. Mass Jungle Law provides towns the ability to create a Finance Committee by bylaw, but it is silent on how that committee is appointed. Historically, the principle has been that Finance Committees are appointed by the moderator because both the moderator and the Finance Committee answer solely to town meeting. The town moderator, being elected and unpaid, has no vested interest in the town's budget, and a Finance Committee is designed to be independent of all other boards and committees. This is evidenced by the fact that many towns, including our own, by bylaw, does not allow resident employees to sit on the Finance Committee, and further restricts members of the Finance Committee from sitting on any other board or committee, whether elected or appointed. It is the only town board in Norton restricted in that manner, and the intent is to maintain their independence. With regards to the article, I am technically on the fence as to whether we really need to change the process, but if it appeases a broader population, I am not against the concept per se. It is true that other towns have adopted the use of a committee to appoint by, to appoint the Finance Committee. However, what I do have an issue with is the makeup of the committee being presented in this petition. The chosen panel was borrowed from another section of the charter with little care or thought to, one, its relevance to the task at hand, two, its appropriateness for the task, and, three, the unnecessary added burden it's going to present to the other board and committee members who, for the appearance of propriety, should not even be involved. The panel that has been proposed in this petition inserts into the process departments who have a direct vested interest in the town budget, and therefore add new and unnecessary potentials for conflict, conflicts of interest and bias. As I noted earlier, other towns have adopted the use of a committee to appoint members to the FinCom. Mr. Moderator, through you, if Mr. Zoner could put up the chart that I provided on the screen? Let's take a look at how, how some of the other towns have structured that committee to avoid the pitfalls that I mentioned. I would also like to point out that in the presentation that was provided to you, it gave a random sample of a hundred and twenty-one towns out of the three-hundred-and-fifty-one that exist in the Commonwealth. Not all towns are similar in size, government, and structure, and there was no direction as to how those one hundred and twenty-one were chosen. However, one moment, please. Apologies, I did try to make this easier for everybody. I'm just gonna keep going. If it comes up, it comes up. If not, then we'll muddle through. So, I used a sample of the thirty-five towns with an open town meeting form of government, five Select Board members, and a population greater than fifteen thousand, where it came out that Norton was the mean of this group. Of those thirty-five towns, Finance Committees are appointed solely by the moderator in twenty-two towns, and appointed by committee in eight. As would have been noted, there are five other towns who use an entirely different method, uh, and varying methods to seat their Finance Committee. One of the things that was not addressed, uh, in the presentation was the specific makeup that other towns use in appointing a Finance Committee, and I would like to address that. Of the eight towns that do use a committee, in my scenario, in six, the panel is comprised of the moderator, the chairperson of the Finance Committee, and the chairperson of the Select Board. The other two towns committees, hi, well, can't say they're highlighted, are also comprised of the moderator and the chair of the Finance Committee, but have a variation in the third member. In one case, it is the Finance Director, and in the other case of Grafton, it is the town clerk that occupies that third position. What is clear is that they have taken steps to limit the panel to only the minimum number necessary to form a committee, and that the majority have taken steps to construct a panel in such a way that ensures as few members as possible have a vested interest in the budget of their respective towns. In my opinion, what is being offered here is not an improvement, and in my opinion, creates more issues than it resolves. There are better ways of going about achieving this, as evidenced by what other towns have done. So, I'm not in favor of approving this warrant article as written. My feeling is that charter changes such as this should be handled as provided for in the charter. The charter calls for the Select Board to appoint a special committee to do a periodic review of the charter and bylaws, to identify where changes may be warranted and updates are needed to reflect current conditions. We are long past overdue to put a committee in place to review and bring the charter up to date and to make recommendations for changes such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. I apologize for the, uh-
I tried.
The computer problems. Yes, sir, you're next.
Dinesh Savas, Five Brahman Drive, uh, member of the school committee. Uh, I wanna highlight that because I also wanna say that I speak only for myself right now as a voter of this town and not as a member of the school committee. Uh, and one of the reasons I wanna highlight that is because, as far as I know, I don't believe we have had any action on this at all. This is, is not something that has come before us. It's not something that we voted on. We have no opinion as a, as a school board on this at all. That being said, I don't, I don't think it's actually without merit, quite frankly. Um, I don't think it's insane that the people who are in charge of the largest pieces of the budget put people forward to ask questions and present points about that. I'm gonna be fairly brief. I wasn't intending to get up and speak, but I do- but I do want to say, there have been a couple of times now where we've had this, there's a conflict, there's a conflict tossed around. I think Mr. Gueva said the foxes were choosing the guards that guarded the hen house or something like that. I, I take umbrage at the implication that there's something untoward that we're trying to do. I will speak for the School Committee now. We have always been very forward and very above board with what we thought our budget should be. So I don't think we're trying to pull a fast one. We're certainly not trying to pull a fast one with this, this article. It's, it's been our, our policy to be very clear about what we thought we needed to make this a, you know, a superior school system. And any of you who follow the budget know that we put in a larger budget than we're ever going to get because we want the town to see that and know what we're looking for. And then it always gets voted down to the number that we can actually live with as a town. And that's okay. And that's how that process should be. There should be clarity with it. There should be some, some type of transparency. So, that's all I'm going to say on that, but I do want to just throw out a quick suggestion. If, if there's an issue about whether or not it's the town moderator or this appointment, and I, I just thought this as I was kind of sitting over there, why don't we, and this is not an amendment, this is simply a suggestion, why not have the, the four appointees and then five members appointed by a moderator? So there's a split. At least you have some people in the room that have skin in the game in the budget and can tell you, hey, here's why we have that number. Here's how you need to think about this number. Here's why that's important. Here's why this is not that important, and we're willing to cut that. So, again, that's just a suggestion, not an amendment. Thank you, your time.
Thank you. Ms. Delaney, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Renee Delaney, South Washington Street. Through you, I have two questions. The first, actually, Mr. Savas started the answer, but my question, having been a former member of the Select Board, we have this presented to us multiple times. And one of the questions that came up was the opinion of the other boards who this would impact. And I know Tim previously spoke and Dinesh just said that the School Committee hadn't opined on this, but it would be helpful to know what the different committees feel from the Select Board to the Planning Board and the Assessors on their participation in this and if they support this.
Would anybody like to respond to that question? Mr. Tool, you'll be next.
You're making me get up, Renee? Jeez. And I'm Tim Griffin, 169 John Scott Boulevard, and the Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board did not review this article as, as a board. Speaking for myself, I see no issues with the current process.
And I'm sure you're at the School Committee, did not review this and does not have a formal opinion on it.
Hi, Meg Arts, Chair of the Select Board. We did, as Renee referenced, review this multiple times and a couple, multiple different members have been part of this. And the last iteration to actually be on the town board, we did vote three to two against putting this on.
Thank you. Mr. Tool.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. As Bill Gueva, the Deputy Moderator, said, that, you know, that the, as a moderator, can't really speak to this matter, but he is the Deputy Moderator, just for clarity on that. You know, I'm asking for the changes and I, one of the reasons, and I'm sorry, I apologize. Mr. Sweeney has proposed this because this goes back over a year. It was presented to the Planning Board a year ago and the, and the Planning Board did vote positively on this a year ago. Okay, not this time around. And... A year ago. This article was for the Planning Board and it passed. You know, I would draw that statement, if you want to go back, but it, that's, you're the only board that, that did vote positively to support it. With that being said, I gave, and I've spoken to people that were in opposition to this, asking them, bring, bring changes, you know? I'm not thinking that this is, you know, I'm proposing this. I'm not trying to shove this down anyone's throat. Bring changes. And they, the, there's a select group of people that don't want the change in this. And it leads me to the question of why? And with danger of going with Dinesh's comments of this is something serious going on, I don't believe that. But I do believe it's not diversity of makeup, but it's diverse opinions and ideas and thoughts to the budget process and how the town manager's budget is interpreted and how it should be spent and switched around. So that is why that I would, I recommend this article and Article 12. I will actually use the moderator.
Yes, ma'am.
Gretchen Stalter, 7 Stonyfield Road. I just would like to say that I, I totally agree with Bill Gueva with everything that he mentioned. I, we can't get people to even serve on boards. I find it, I think it's going to be very difficult to get enough people. And if, and then the people that they may choose, I don't know if that could somehow be political too, if they're all come, they are interested in some particular area. So I'm just not a fan. And I don't know if Mrs. Parker wants to come up to kind of go over her slides since they got the slideshow to work now, but it might be interesting to see how other, the other towns that have these same types of committees, they could be just very large towns and not really sort of similar to the town of Norton, which, again, I don't think that it's really necessary. It doesn't sound like the other, the other board to really feel that it's a necessary thing since it's not being recommended by everyone. So I would, wouldn't go along with it.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, just, my first question wasn't completely answered. If I could just ask Mr. Units if there's an opinion from the Assessors?
I don't have an opinion from the Assessors, no.
Okay. And, Mr. Moderator, I did have a second question. Can I do that, just with all due respect of Ms. Parker?
No, please, go ahead.
Okay. My, my second question, it is back to Mr. Sweeney, the petitioner. It's been mentioned a couple of times about the difficulty with folks volunteering in town. And I'll take the opportunity, like you did earlier, as a Chair of the Economic Development Commission, we have three positions open. Two of those were vacated by individuals who are now on the Finance Committee. So if anybody's interested, please, please let me know or please let Mr. Units know. But in respect to that, because it is so difficult to get volunteers, and many of the volunteers are people who are in elected positions or already volunteering on other committees or boards, Mr. Sweeney, how, how do you see the, this proposal actually improving or increasing diverse opinions for the proposed town budget? Based on this appoint, based on this Finance Appointment Committee?
Can you repeat, say that again?
How do, can you explain how you see that this will actually improve or increase diverse opinions on the Finance Committee?
Well, I'm going to challenge what Mr. Gueva said earlier. You've got, and I just went back to how, as far as no interest for the board. If I go backwards here with Mr., with, with the, Mr. Moderator's appointments, back in, back in the summer of 2020, had three people. Zach Tillis was, was appointed. Mr. Snyder was appointed and somebody named Andy didn't make it. So there was interest there. Let's see. And also in the summer of 2021, there was Kevin, I don't know how you say the name, Bujat. He was appointed, but John and Catherine were not. So there has been interest in the, in the, in the position. And Mr., Mr. Gueva, at one time, was speaking to the Finance Committee, said his hardest job is telling somebody that they haven't made it, that they did not, they did not get appointed. That is the hardest job that he's had as being the, the town moderator. So I'm going to, I'm going to challenge that and say there is interest. There is diversity. You do have, it's not just one person all the time that, thank God, somebody's coming in to fill the spot. Okay? There are two or three people at a time. Mr. Snyder here, that rejected twice, he told me. The, the Selectman, or Select Board Member. Zach, I'm sorry to call you out, but you did say you were rejected twice. So that's going back even further. That's going back to the Gueva days, that. Sorry, sorry, Kevin, you didn't make it. Or Zach, he's on the board now and he was your appointment, but as far as I know, he was denied by Mr. Gueva. So there is, it isn't just one person for one spot all the time, or empty spots for this. There is diver, there is unopenness or diversity already into the, you know, into the system. This would just create it more. Plus, it's Mr., it's the town moderator's job solely to find people to fill this spot. Now you've got four other people that can open up the selection process, friends, neighbors, committee members, things like that, other, other known people in town. So it, it does open it up.
Ms. Parker, do you want to add anything now that we've got your, briefly?
Thanks. Mr. Zahnar, if you don't mind, just kind of just scrolling down so people can take a look at the, the makeup of the comps, so to speak. I did want to point out that I noted, Mr. Tool had said they had asked for recommendations and suggestions to this proposal. And I would like to point out that this exact chart has been provided to both the current and the prior version of the Select Board, both of which have rejected the proposal on its face. And, like I said, I'm not entirely opposed to a committee. It just needs to be the correct makeup of that committee, which I've provided here and was not heeded. So, here we are. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe you were next, sir.
William Francis, 66 Plain Street. And, Mr. Moderator, as, as this gets very, very interesting as this conversation and the whole subject unfolds, I, I just, it, to me, it sounds like it's going to be more and more like you want to appoint some sort of an oversight committee so we can take a good look and at the certain budgets and justify these budgets also. It's a very intriguing idea and I think it's worth examining as our budgets keep increasing and increasing. But it's, it might be for the future to decide because it seems like it's very getting, very much into the weeds and I'd just sort of like to bring it back to top level. I mean, what's wrong with the system we have now? And if we can improve it, maybe we should discuss it a little bit more at another time. But that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Cody Thompson, 30 Keith Drive. Full disclosure, I'm a sitting member of the Finance Committee appointed by, by Walter. Two questions, one to you, Mr. Moderator. You mentioned, I believe, at the beginning of this call to order for the Fall Town Meeting that there is currently an opening to the Finance Committee. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I believe that's the third opening within the past six months or so? And of these past three openings, how many individuals have expressed interest or reached out to you for an interview?
Four.
And if, if I could, Mr. Moderator, through you, ask the petitioner, what would preclude those individuals that sit on the other committees and boards that you mentioned that you'd like to have oversight of the appointing of the Finance Committee? What is currently preventing those individuals from talking to the people that they would like to see on the Finance Committee and encouraging them to put their hat in the ring?
The new members of the, of the new committee have more skin in the game. You can always say, yeah, that'd be great for you to do, but now you've got a committee member that's looking for somebody. It's almost like on the to-do list. To find members that will show up when they are appointed, too.
Before you speak, did you want to answer a question?
Yeah, a quick answer. You're assuming that we don't.
Don't, sir.
And that's not, that's not always true.
I'm, I'm not assuming. It was a statement that you made.
You said, what's, what's stopping them from it? And I'm saying, you're assuming that we don't.
Thank you for answering the question.
Yes, sir.
Kevin Snyder, 215 Bay Road. A current member of the Select Board, a current member of the Economic Development Commission and a two-time rejected applicant for the Finance Committee. By Mr. Gueva, so. So, just wanted to, I had a whole statement. I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go into that much detail. I think we've all heard everybody's points and I think Mr. Francis made a good point that we, we could probably get much deeper into the weeds on this issue. One of my reasons for not voting for this on the Select Board was that I didn't feel like the petitioner did a good enough job of getting into the weeds and getting into the details and did sort of a very superficial overview of what is, you know, the current state of Finance Committees throughout the state. And you could see that with Ms. Parker's presentation, that you can sort of slice and dice the statistics any way you want to sort of make it look like, you know, your, your proposal is, is the right one whether to vote for or against this. But, so I think Mr. Francis makes a good point that, that we should probably, you know, I think everybody's fine with reviewing a process and seeing if there's ways to improve the process. I'm kind of of the mind of it's not broke, don't fix it, though, and I'm not sure what we're fixing here. I still have yet to hear of a problem that is actually being solved. So, you know, to my mind, you know, I think it's important that we, that we, you know, review processes, we look for efficiencies. By the way, this would make things much more inefficient. I don't see how adding another layer of government makes anything more efficient. And I don't know how anybody could say that with a straight face. Oh, yeah, you know what we're going to do? We're going to add another layer of this so that we can make it more bureaucratic and that will help the process. I don't see how that makes sense in any way. But, anyway, I voted against this as a member of the FinCom last year and I voted against it again as a member of the Select Board because, again, I do not believe that we have enough details. I don't feel like the case is very compelling. I don't feel like there's a problem that's being solved here. And just two quick things before I sit down. One is that I found something very interesting in what Mr. Gueva just said, which was not something I had thought about before, which is the Finance Committee answers only to town meeting, which I think is interesting because we just had a whole Charter vote where the town voted to keep the legislative power with town meeting. And if the Finance Committee answers only to town meeting, wouldn't you be lessening the power of town meeting by putting this additional committee in charge of appointing the Finance Committee? So, and then the last thing is, I think, if you're talking about, once like sort of major missing part of all this is we're talking about the appointment of the Finance Committee, but nobody's mentioned, what are the qualifications for being on the Finance Committee? I mean, I was rejected twice and I thought I was qualified. I think maybe Mr. Gueva can answer this question. What are we really arguing about here? What are the qualifications to be on the Finance Committee? And, you know, think about that as you're thinking about adding another layer to this process, which is supposedly supposed to make it more efficient and get more people to volunteer for the Finance Committee. So if Mr. Gueva would be happy to answer that question, what's the qualification for an individual to be on the Finance Committee? Thanks, everyone.
Could I have him speak real quick? Then you'll be next. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Dave Heaney, 25 Fletcher Way. So I, I heard three main arguments for doing this, none of which I found particularly compelling. The, the arguments that I found were, we're looking for more transparency, we're looking to increase recruiting, and we're looking to increase diversity on the board. On the transparency front, Mr. Gueva gave us another option to get there. Were there any other options to get to the transparency goal? I guess this is a question through you, Mr. Moderator, for the petitioner. Were there any other options considered to get to the transparency goal besides this?
Can you ask all three of your questions then, if you've?
Yes, so that's the only question I have. The, the other two, the recruiting front, we heard the petitioner say, frankly, there are no challenges in recruiting right now. He himself called out that there have been a number of applicants for the recent posts, though. So I don't understand why we would make a change for recruiting purposes. And then on the diversity front, we heard an assumption that this will make the, the committee more diverse, but no reason for it to do so. So those two arguments, I, I personally feel don't carry water. And then on the transparency front, I'm just curious. Yes, this would increase transparency, putting in front of the open meeting law. Does feel like a heavy-handed- Does feel like a heavy-handed way to do that, so I'm just curious if there were any other mechanisms to increase transparency that were considered before this? I don't know where the petitioner went. So it was called out that one of the goals for doing this is to increase transparency. Were there any other mechanisms for transparency considered before something this drastic of a change?
Well, we don't know what the transparenz, there is no transparency, it seems like, right now.
So there was?
How does, how does it happen? Walt, if I may, Mr. Moderator?
So, Mr. Moderator, can I just ask that my question be answered before he goes off on a tangent?
He's, I'm going to ask him. How does he, how does he do, make his?
My, my question was, did the petitioner consider any other mechanisms to increase transparency other than this article?
It follows open meeting laws.
So is that a no? There was nothing else considered before going down this path?
That, I thought that would have been good enough, that it follows.
It is certainly one option to do it. I'm just asking, was there anything else considered?
Meeting notes, votes?
I got my answer, Mr. Moderator. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Yes, sir.
Steve Hornsby, 66 Pine Street, current Select Board member. I have quite a bit of notes here, so bear with me. I'd like to move the question.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'd like to move the question.
You may not move the question after speaking. So I am going to declare that out of order at this time. If you want to wait, you can make it again. You made a comment, so you need to move the question immediately.
Are you serious?
I will, let me just check with town council.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I didn't speak to the article at all.
Mr. Hornsby, you may continue.
I'd like to move the question.
We have a motion on the floor to move the question. That I will, and I will entertain that. The motion is to cut off debate on the question. We have a motion on the floor. I will entertain you, entertain your question if, if it comes to that. So the motion to move the question is to cut off debate. We will take a vote. A positive vote will cut off debate, and we will move immediately to the vote. A negative vote will cause, will cause debate to continue.
I have a point of order, sir. Why are you shutting me down?
I have a motion on the floor that I need to honor first.
Well, I would check with the attorney first.
I'm pretty confident on this one, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to defer.
I'd like to hear from the attorney. It's my privilege.
Would town council like to?
He didn't shut off the conversation.
I am going to continue with the motion on the floor. So just a reminder, we are voting on moving the question, not the original article. All those in favor of moving Article 12, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? The motion to move the question passes. We will now move to voting on Article 12. There's a motion on the floor to move to a ballot vote. That requires 12 participants, I'm sorry, 15 participants of the Town Meeting to, to agree, to stand and be recognized as supporting that motion. Seeing 12, we will move to a ballot vote on Article 12. Fifteen, I'm sorry. Yes. The criteria for a ballot vote has been achieved, so we will move to a ballot vote on Article 12. The town clerk will give us instructions, but I would like to address one of the people in the non-voting section. You appear to have a ballot. If you intend to vote, excuse me, miss, in the red sweatshirt, do you have a ballot? You need to move out of the non-voter section, then, please. Anywhere else. Thank you. Ms. Clerk.
You've all been given a ballot. You vote on this question either yes or no. We have people here who have boxes that they're going to go row by row to collect your ballots. They will be counted, so they'll be coming around right now.
Yes, sir. I will clarify, I will clarify the vote. We, we are voting on Article 12. We are going to vote by ballot, which is the piece of paper you have here. A yes vote will, will, will approve the charter change proposal as before us. A no vote will keep the, the appointment process for the Finance Committee as it is today. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for the ballot. We have the results in. The yes count was twenty-two, the no count was eighty. Article twelve fails two-thirds majority as determined by the ballot vote. Article thirteen.
Randy Fogarty, ninety-five Oak Street.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move Article thirteen.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Basically, what we'd like to do is make it fair for everyone in town to be able to do large-scale solar by being able to apply by special permit. It's not a guarantee that you can do it, but you're allowed to do it by special permit. Right now, if you live in R sixty or an R eighty, you can apply for a special permit. If you live in R forty, you cannot apply for a special permit. So I'd just like to make it fair for the whole town. If somebody has twenty or thirty acres in an R forty zone and they would like to do a large-scale solar instead of a housing development, they'd have the ability to apply to do it.
Thank you, sir. Before I open discussion, can we get a report from the planning board?
Yes, Tim Griffin, one sixty-nine John Scott Boulevard, and Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board did the applicant review of the petitioned article. We voted not to recommend it to town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Is there any discussion on Article thirteen? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, Town Council. I need a second on Article thirteen. Is there a second?
Second, please.
Thank you, Mr. Shabbat. Okay, yes, ma'am, you may speak.
Good evening, my name's Kelly Gallagher, two zero one Bay Road. I will be voting no on this article for the following reasons. Placing, excuse me, placing industrial projects in residential neighborhoods is a violation of historical zoning for use. R forty is a higher-density area than R sixty or R eighty. There is only a forty thousand square foot lot requirement versus sixty thousand or eighty thousand square feet. Under recent Department of Energy Resources guidance, battery energy storage may be required for solar projects over five hundred kilowatts. These battery systems are incredibly dangerous and unethical. If a fire event occurs, which is a likely probability according to battery experts, water is applied to cool the batteries to try to contain the fire. Previous fires have required thousands of gallons of water applied continuously over days to contain these events. Adding water to lithium-ion batteries produces hydrofluoric acid and dangerous gases which can kill everything in its path. These systems do not belong in a residential neighborhood. There is a big difference between the size of the battery in your phone and in an energy storage system. The solar panels themselves are known to catch on fire. Walmart has removed them from the roofs of two hundred and fifty of their stores because of this. Eighty percent of solar panels are made in China using slave labor. Sixty-six percent of cobalt in the battery systems comes from the Republic of Congo, which uses slave and child labor to mine the battery material. The Environmental Protection Agency has found PFAS in solar panels. PFAS are the forever chemicals typically found in firefighting foam. The town of Easton now has a PFAS problem in their water system. These are industrial utilities that belong in industrial zones. And finally, I am sick of seeing our bylaws being changed to allow a project instead of a project conforming with our existing bylaws.
Yes, sir. One question before. Can I confirm with the petitioner that the motion is moved is as printed in the warrant?
Yes, it's printed as in the warrant. It just simply states that you can apply for a special permit. It's not guaranteeing anyone can do it. It's just, just like R sixty and R eighty, residential areas can apply for special permits. It'd make it fair for a residential forty resident, for somebody who's, I don't know, maybe who's lived in town before there was any zoning, and they owned the property and their family for hundreds of years, and all of a sudden their property is now in R forty, but now they can't do a solar farm. You know, if somebody has a thirty-acre farm in the middle of the woods and nobody can see it, nobody can hear it, nobody's going to know it's there, it's going to help with our, you know, electrical. We obviously are not going to have enough electrical once they start with all these EV cars, which it sounds like she was a big component against EV cars because that's what's in their car, is batteries in residential areas that are going to catch on fire and burn down houses.
So I'm just confirming that the, your, the motion you're moving is as printed in the warrant?
Yes, as it, as printed.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Shabbat, I live at fifty-six Mansfield Avenue. Mister Moderator, I stand in favor of this article for a variety of reasons. One being that it corrects a basic unfairness in the zoning code to allow this to be by special permit in residential zones, but only in certain residential zones is patently unfair. The issuance of a special permit requires an affirmative answer to a very simple question. Would the proposed project be better or more desirable than what would be allowed by right? Very simple question. If you can't answer that question affirmatively, you don't grant the special permit. It also requires a, what's called a supermajority vote of the planning board. You need five affirmative votes as opposed to a simple majority. So the standards are high in both cases to issue a standard, a special permit. That's, hence the term "special." They're not just given out automatically. The other reason I rise is that these are projects that serve a common good. We're seeing them in a lot of places because we need more electricity. We're not getting more electricity from coal-fired plants or other, I mean, I guess there's a big debate about what is the safest way to provide the electricity that we need. And, and that debate, I'm sure, will go on for a long time. But the bottom line is, we do need it. It does serve the public good in such a way that, I don't know if it's considered large-scale, but there's a good-sized array right out in this parking lot. I was fortunate enough to be able to park under it, so if it's raining out, my truck's not going to get wet. Probably about thirty years ago, I sat on a committee with Joe Fernandez at a public hearing, and him and I didn't agree on what the outcome should be. And Joe said something to me that I've never forgotten all these years. He said, "To be a good citizen, you have to consider not your own needs, but the needs of everyone, and that's how you should vote." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Yes, I've got my own opinions on this green energy stuff. I would like to note that somebody questioned if the town was going to buy hybrid vehicles for some department or another. So it would seem that the town's going along with it. We're going to hear both sides of it. I probably can't add anything to it, or at least not very much that most people here would agree with, but I do have a question that I think should be taken seriously. I know the Finance Committee votes on all articles on the warrant, but I think it would be, since they voted not recommend it, I think it'd be important to get a, kind of a full rundown on the negative implications this would cause for the town and its citizens that precipitated this not-recommended vote. Because otherwise, the voters should maybe take that not-recommended vote of the Finance Committee with a grain of salt, because their area of expertise should be financial, not feelings about zonings or feeling about this new green deal and so on and so forth. So the Finance Committee could explain that rather detailed if they could. I think it would be a good service to the people that came out tonight. Thank you.
I'll ask for a response, but I will point out that one of the purposes of the Finance Committee is to vote on, to discuss and vote all the articles, not just the finance. Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Chair, would you like to respond?
Mister Moderator, through you. We did vote on October third, twenty twenty-two, and we did vote not to recommend, as he mentioned. The vote was two yes, eight no, and zero abstentions. The members, some members of the FinCom are here and are welcome to speak to their own personal vote. I personally voted against it, and that's because, I will say, probably the majority of the conversation, we didn't wait to vote on this particular article until after the Planning Board had voted when it comes to zoning or a planning-type article, because, as you said, we do vote on all articles, but we don't necessarily have expertise in those areas. We look to the folks that do. So when we found out that the Planning Board had voted one to six not to recommend, I think that's probably what informed many of the members of the FinCom's vote. I can't speak for them, but I can summarize by saying that.
Mister Moderator, just to clarify, I prefaced my question by stating I acknowledge that they were supposed to take up all the articles on the warrant. I think there would be a dereliction of duty on that Finance Committee if they took up all the warrant articles and didn't use financial criteria. I think if it's called the Finance Committee, that should be the area that they deal in. There may be some secondary considerations on a vote like that, but I'd like to know what the financial considerations were on that committee as a group, okay, that would let them come back with a not-recommended recommendation. Because, like it or not, the Finance Committee's recommendations wield an awful lot of power. I dare say there's people that come to these meetings and they're steered very much by what the Finance Committee wants, because for years they've been sold as the experts. So all I'm asking for is what was their expertise when they voted not recommended? Because I think that's important. I mean, it could be bad financially, it could be good financially. I think we've got to get that on the table.
Thank you. I think we've heard the response. I will offer another opportunity to answer more if anybody is interested from the Finance Committee.
Nothing further.
I believe we have our answer? Yes, sir.
Cody Thompson, thirty-keith Drive. To answer Mr. Frehney's question from a personal standpoint, I did, I was one of the two members that voted in the affirmative to recommend this article, and I did so for a multitude of reasons. But to address your simple question of the finance aspect of it, these solar farms generally run about anywhere from a dollar to a dollar thirty per watt for construction costs. So if we're talking about a two-megawatt system, it's somewhere between two million dollars and two and a half million dollars' worth of improved value to the land, and that is taxable value. The second aspect of it was the, the reason that I voted in the affirmative was the current property that the petitioner was bringing this forth, I believe is currently used as a junkyard, thousands of cars, debris. This isn't, this isn't residential property that's being changed into a solar farm. This is a property that is not current. No? That's not the property? Okay. So I withdraw that. Regardless, that property does exist within a residential area. So regardless of what it's zoned as, R forty, whether it's Grandfather Den or not, you have a junkyard existing in a residential area already. So whether you want to call that industrial or commercial, whatever you want to call that, it already exists, and I would think that a solar farm would be much better than the junkyard. And the third reason has already been addressed. It's about equity across the board. R sixty can apply for a special permit, R eighty can apply for a special permit, but R forty can't. There's a lot of vacant land that could very easily, without special permit, be developed into residential housing. And I think we've, we've heard a lot of commentary and discussion about housing development in this town. I think, I know where a lot of people stand on bringing more people into this town, and I think that any use of the land that is of benefit to the landowner and to the town and to increase tax revenues, I'm for. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. William Francis, sixty-six Plain Street. Mister Moderator, I would vote no on this article. I believe the state has designated R forty specifically for high-density residential areas and also for some affordable housing programs. And also, this, it was a few years ago, we went through a lot of difficulty in the town with people losing property value, major property value, millions of dollars on their homes because of a company that wanted to come in and put up a solar farm. And without any regard to the residents of the street or the area. This is not a good law, excuse me, not a good article. I applaud the gentleman's entrepreneurship, that he was, would like to increase value of his property and also start some sort of a solar farm business. But the fact of the matter is, is that solar farms really don't do anything for the community. It does something for the owners, because they sell the electricity back to the electric company. So with that, sir, I would, I would certainly recommend a no vote on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Excuse me, sir, you're out of order. I have a speaker. Thank you, Mister Moderator. Fred Williams, seventeen Kensington Road. I just want to ask a simple question. I watched a very interesting show on solar panels. How many people know how they get rid of them? One in ten gets recycled. The other nine end up in landfills. They've got heavy metal in them, they're not good, they can even leach into, if it's not proper landfill, into the water supply. You think about it. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Amy Sawyer, seven Ellis Road, member of the Finance Committee. Just wanted to share that I voted no on this article, because when solar is developed on private property, it does not net the town any financial benefit, and because I was concerned that adding these changes to the bylaw in a high-density residential area could cause people in the future to try and cram in weirdly shaped solar projects to accommodate the offset requirements. So for those reasons, I voted not to recommend this article. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Ash, three eighty-one Southwest Street. I'd like to know how many acres are involved in this? How many, what type of power is coming off this solar system? And is there any buffer between the field and the property line?
Yes, sir. You may respond.
There is no specific job right now, or site. It's a simple article to make it equal for R forty, R sixty, and R eighty. So there is no specific site right now.
I believe I know where this piece of property is, and I'm sure that I'd like to go there and build a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or a million-dollar house right across from the junkyard. I think this proposal to put a solar field in there, a solar farm, is a good idea, and it's a, it'd enhance, this state is one of the top states for alternative. And it's an enhanced, this state is one of the top states for alternate energy. Let's keep it that way. And the only way we're going to keep it that way is keep on growing with solar and with wind. Not hydro. I am opposed to hydro. But with solar, I think it's the way, look at out here, and people are talking about these inverters making noise. I think there's one right outside the door. What's going to happen with the students in this building? I think we need to give this man a chance and a fair equal chance to develop his land, which I don't believe is that conducive to good residential development because of the surrounding area. So my vote is a yes vote.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Chuck Gallagher, 201 Bay Road. I'm strongly against this. I'd like the people to consider what this project, these projects should really be called, electric plants. They bring electricity in. It sounds nice when you say solar farm, it sounds nice and pretty. But the reality of it is, their goal is to bring electricity, sell it to electric companies, when they can turn around and sell it to the public. So nobody really makes money except for the people that own the property and the people that are buying it from the electric company, or sell it to the electric company. That's it. There's usually a middleman involved in that as well. But I'd also like to point out that the batteries that people are talking about, one project in this town that's pushing very hard to get through right now is going to have three shipping containers, three shipping containers full of batteries, fifty-eight feet away from somebody else's property line. Those could burn for weeks, three hundred shipping containers. And it's all to save that energy to sell off and make a profit. You're not going to make any money off it. You might make a little bit off of what they give the town, but the property value is going to go down from the result of people looking at a house with a solar plant in their backyard. It's going to drop the property value down greatly. We know that in our neighborhoods. It's a fact. So there's a lot more things to consider about an energy plant than how nice it would be to go green. Because it's not as green as people think it is. It's being sold that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Steve Washall, I'm on the EDC, not really applicable here, but I just wanted to remind everybody this is not about putting solar panels on your house. It's not even the scale of the ones in front of the school. This is massive scale. It takes acres and acres of land. It's in the area near great woods. That's almost the only available land for grabs, is going to be our biggest forest areas. And it's just going to be a lot of environmental destruction. I'm not opposed to industry. I think it needs to be in the right spot, and we don't actually have that much space left to just bulldoze more down. That's my own call. Everybody else has their own feelings about it, but I don't think it's as environmentally friendly as it seems at all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Marian Johnson, 208 Bay Road. So my first comment would be, as I, you know, as it seems you're trying to change a bylaw to benefit one person, and that seems to happen a lot in this town, the bylaws get bent and changed so that somebody can benefit. And that happened personally to me. The solar plant, it's not a farm, it's a plant, is trying to be constructed behind my backyard. And somebody mentioned that this is, you know, you need a special permit. Well, yeah, the special permit went through. So it's not as hard as it seems. And you're building the solar plant where I live with my children. The inverters, they are loud. You can hear them. And they want to put three hundred thousand pounds of battery fifty feet from where we live. If those explode, which they are known to do so, it will take hundreds of thousands of gallons of water over days and days and days to put these fires out. They are not safe. They do not belong in residential areas. There is no reason to change this bylaw. Just, I am very sorry for your property, and I am sorry that you can't use it the way you want, but it's just not safe. The, you know, we have fought this project so much behind my neighborhood, it would be a travesty to see these projects going in behind other people's houses. It is dropping our property values. You know, it's giving my children sleepless nights. They say if this solar plant is built behind our house, do we have to move? What are we going to do? Is it going to make us sick? Is it going to kill us? Is our house going to catch on fire while we're sleeping? Are there going to be explosions? Do we have to leave our pets behind when we get evacuated in the middle of the night? You guys don't understand all of the things that have been behind this fight for years and years and years. We bought our dream home, and now we have to question if this is going to be our forever home. I don't want to see that happen to other people in this town or any neighborhood. You know, somebody talked about being afraid of batteries in cars. Yeah, there's Tesla cars that have caught on fire, and they're not able to put them out. It takes thousands of gallons of water to put those out. So this is, this can happen. These things will explode, they will catch on fire, the panels will catch on fire. And to continue to allow these to be put in residential neighborhoods is not acceptable. This has to stop. And I vote no. Please, I hope everybody will do the same.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jim Slattery, in all due respect to the previous speakers, I would like to speak on the topic, which the topic is a zoning change. I don't think we, it's up to him to go to get a special permit. Every petitioner who does a private petition has a personal interest, but let's stick to the topic. This is a zoning change. I don't care about alternative energy. I don't care about, I do care about solar panels. I happen to have them. But I don't care, I came here for a zoning change. I don't want to hear the history of panels and how they're going to make me glow in the dark and everything else. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mai Furkawa from 143 Bowers Street. I just had a question on, like, who would, if we get this special permit, like, who is deciding on whether or not, like, this place is okay and this place isn't? Because I'm assuming that this is a case-by-case basis if you're in the residential 40 area. So is this going to be like a, like a company of people to assign different, like, okays and nos? Or am I just, I don't really know a lot about these things, so.
Oh, planning board.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
All right. If I could call Mr. Griffin forward just briefly to respond.
So Tim Griffin, I'm chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board is the special permit granting authority for projects like this. As I think was mentioned in an earlier speaker, and I apologize, I can't remember who, special permits of this type require a five out of seven vote, so five out of the seven members, to be approved. There are other types of special permits, but that one is a five out of seven. Yeah, so, but the Planning Board has a rule on it. We voted not to recommend this article.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Gueva, I think you were next.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Gueva, 111 Maple Street. Two quick things. Number one, I know I would appreciate it, and I think other people would appreciate it. When we have a zoning change, and I realize this was a petition article, but when we have a zoning change, it would be nice to have a copy of the actual zoning bylaw so that when it says by changing, by inserting this word or deleting that word, we can actually see it. I'm one of the, probably the few people that hasn't memorized the entire zoning bylaw, and so I have trouble sometimes understanding. These are pretty simple, but sometimes adding a word can change the context of a whole paragraph or a whole section. So I would hope that in the future, we can have the entire article as changed in front of us. The second thing is, we can debate whether solar panels are good, solar panels are bad, indifferent, whatever. But that's, as, you know, as the previous speaker pointed out, that's not what this is about. We already allow solar farms by special permit in R60 and R80. The only question being decided here is if we also allow them by special permit in 40. So I would hope that we can keep the discussion to whether or not we should include allowing solar panels in residential 40 as well as residential 60 and 80, because that's what we're really talking about. We're not talking about whether they're good or they're bad. We're just talking, and I realize that plays into it. But we're talking about, we already allow them in two of the zones. Now the question is, do we allow them in the third?
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Cody Thompson, 30 Keith Drive. I just wanted to address some of the comments or questions that were raised around the safety of solar panels or solar farms within residential areas. I can assure you, as an individual that places insurance on these massive, you know, utility-scale solar projects, the type of projects that would be presented in an R40 setting, I think it was a five-acre requirement minimum for the size of the lot, the vast majority of those would not have batteries attached to them. If they did, it might be one or two. There are various chemical compositions of batteries that are constantly changing and evolving. Everybody knows about lithium-ion. Everybody has one in their pocket and purse right now. And there, that specific composition of chemical makeup for the battery is more volatile than others. There are advancements happening all the time. Lithium-ion phosphate is not as volatile as lithium-ion and is being used more and more. And as far as what individuals in R40 could stand to gain from this, there are, in particular, the recent Inflation Reduction Act that was passed is geared towards advancing and promoting more community-level solar, where you have individuals that may band together, neighbors, neighborhoods, residential developments, where they will create their own, what's called microgrid, where you can basically build a solar system within your community, and you are directly powering your own homes through the use of that system. Right now, as it stands, individuals in R60 and R80 can apply for special permits to get community solar and power their own homes through the use of a solar system on up to five acres or whatever the zoning laws are. Right now, R40 doesn't even have that option. So what you have is a disparity between, if you're lucky enough to live in R60 and R80 and you want solar and you want to get together with a group of your neighbors and power your own homes, you have the right to buy some land and try and do that and apply for a special permit. If you're R40, you're SOL.
Thank you. One more, and then it's your turn, Mr. Shabbat.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sandy Allerhead, 14 Tipping Place. I just want to point out that the, we're talking about the R40 and the lot sizes there, but this is, this bylaw, if you could see the whole thing, to Mr. Gueva's point, you would see that it's a minimum of five acres required. And the setbacks are the same as what they are for R60 and R80 as well. Those are all delineated. So there are a front yard setback of seventy-five feet, a side yard setback of fifty feet, and a rear yard of fifty feet as well. So those are all as part of the original bylaw. That's just, this is just being added to. So again, it wouldn't be on a, you know, a forty thousand acre, a thirty thousand square foot lot, it would be on a minimum of five acres.
Thank you. Mr. Shabbat.
I would just like to rise to add maybe a little more clarification. Lady Rose asked a question as to who would approve it, oversee it, and set conditions, which it would be the Planning Board. It would be a special permit, and it would be a minimum of five out of seven affirmative votes. That was correctly stated. But there's more to it. The, as I stated in the beginning, the basic question, would this be better than what's already allowed by right, has to be answered in the affirmative. Whatever project is presented on whatever piece of property, it has to be better for the town in the opinion of the Planning Board than what would be allowed there already. That's the bottom-line criteria. To come to an affirmative answer, there's a long negotiation process in every special permit where Planning Board members will vocalize, you need to do this, or I'm not going to vote yes. Or you need to do this, or I'm not going to vote yes. And that changes the project over time. A non-negotiable part of the special permit comes after. Even with a positive vote, the Planning Board then attaches an order of conditions. We vote yes, however, you must do, and I've seen some of those orders, the conditions go almost to a hundred conditions. So there is, I'm just trying to add some clarity to the process, and that would encompass the rest of it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Gallagher, 201 Bay Road. I just want to point out that the gentleman over here said that it's the zoning issue that's in question. Well, he's correct, but the purpose for the zoning change is to put solar in. And this is Pandora's box being opened. If it opens for one, it can open for all. And what can happen, we're not going to be affected by this, basically where we live. Everybody else will be. What happened to us can happen to you. We're having solar panels shoved down our throat with all kinds of dangers, all kinds of court stuff taking place, trying to stop it, spending thousands of dollars just to keep ourselves safe, and we're not getting any help from anybody in the town. This can happen to anybody else too. So if solar happens, and this is nothing against this gentleman, but it could happen anywhere in the town if this goes through. So that's something to think about. The batteries are dangerous. That's a fact. You have to think about what could happen, not just this gentleman here, but after his project is done, and what can happen after that. The doors are going to be opened wide, and they're going to come running through, because everybody's solar happy nowadays. They don't care who they hurt in the process. We know that. Thank you.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. One more, and then, yeah, Mr.?
Kevin Snyder, 215 Bay Road. I'd like to move the question.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to move the question. As before, this motion is to cut off debate on the question. A positive vote will cut off debate, and we will move immediately to the vote. A negative vote, we will continue discussion. So all those in favor of moving the question, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? The motion to move the question passes. We will now move to the vote on Article 13, as printed in the warrant. All those in favor of Article 13, please signify by raising your hand. I'm going to call for a hand count. I feel that's too close for me to make a call.
Are you guys done?
Please be seated.
Are you all set? Can you bring your resources down here, please?
You may be seated. The results of the ballot are forty-three yes, fifty-five no. Article thirteen fails a two-thirds majority, as determined by the ballot count. Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from free cash to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund established to cover the unfunded actuarial liability for retirees' health care and life insurance benefits.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article fourteen? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article fourteen, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article fourteen passes by majority vote, as determined by the moderator. Article fifteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Chair.
I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of two hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the stabilization fund, in accordance with general law, Chapter forty, Section five B.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article fifteen? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article fifteen, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article fifteen passes by majority vote, as determined by the moderator. Is there any further business to come before this town meeting?
Moderator, will you be here?
We have a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you for coming out, everybody. I appreciate it.